We're open May 6th agenda briefing.
Call to order is Chairwoman Barbara Acock, invocations Commissioner Chris Gurley. Pledge of allegiance is Commissioner George Wayne Acock Jr. Then we'll have the approval of the minutes for the April 15th meeting. We'll have an议 discussion. We don't have any adjustments at this point.
Hold on, hold on just a minute. If, if Madam Chair, that, that mine, I got a couple of things I want to discuss today. And I don't know whether we need to do it under with an open meeting or closed session. And it pertains to the nonprofits. So you, what, what do you think, Mr. Neal?
Probably need to know more, but it seems like that would just be open session. Is it budget related or is it?
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can talk to you about it before nine.
Okay.
And then, so we'll have an adjustment of the agenda, our approval of the agenda. And then we'll move to special presentations where we'll have a motion to approve the 2025 May as Mental Health Month in Wayne County. It's presented by Emily Peacock. Number four, we'll have a motion to approve the 2025 National Nurses Week proclamation is read by Wayne County Health Department Director of Nursing Brennae Wolf. Number five, we'll have a motion to approve the 2025 National Law Enforcement Week as Peace Officers Memorial Day proclamation is read by Sheriff Larry Pierce. Number six, we'll have a motion to approve the 2025 Clerks to the Board of County Commissioners Week is read by Assistant County Manager Ginger Moore. Number seven, we'll have a motion to approve the 2025 Medical Laboratory Professionals Week proclamation is read by Wayne County Health Department Laboratory Manager Leah Greimer. Then we'll have any appointment committee business and we'll move on to consent agenda where we now have a late in present use value application. I think there was a couple of those maybe or just one.
Two of those, did you want to see?
Sure. Two present use values that were late.
Chip, if I missed it looking at these, I did, I saw parcel numbers, but I didn't necessarily see the location of.
Uh, the location. Not sure. These are. I'm not sure of the exact, we'd have to look the actual parcel numbers up to, they've been vetted by the tax office. I'm not sure where they're actually located in the county.
The Birch name just sound familiar because there's some birches out my way, so.
I want to think that is in the Grantham area, but I could, I wouldn't swear to it. Okay. And then we move on to budget amendments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Budget amendment number 327. This is from the Detention Center. Purpose of this budget amendment is to cover an anticipated shortfall in the inmate prepared services line item. Expenses for this line item are unpredictable as the inmate population varies from day to day. Therefore, it is difficult to adequately budget. Number 333 is for the Health Department. This budget amendment is to reallocate the adult health and TB program budget for equipment to the communicable disease program. Number 337, this is the Health Department. This is to anticipate and appropriate funds from the 701 child fatality case report, reporting agreement addendum for the local team to prepare and begin using the NFR CRS for the purpose of collecting, analyzing, and reporting information learned through child death reviews. Number 335 is for facilities. This budget amendment is to reallocate funds to the facilities contract line item to get them through the end of the year. Number 338 is the Health Department. This is to allocate additional funding provided by the 452 Breast and Cervical Cancer Agreement Addendum. This is to provide screening and diagnostic services and patient navigation only services to the breast and cervical cancer program.
And these are increases in the budget, right? I didn't see any offset, you know, where it was.
For this one?
Uh huh. Some of them, yeah, I seen. They were increases in the budget.
Uh, well, for this one, this is additional funding. Did you want me to go back?
No.
Oh, okay. Cause some of them are just reappropriations.
Yeah, I see the reappropriations, but this is an increase in the budget.
Yes, it is. Number 339 is an increase in the budget, but that is for additional funding that's received for the investment performance management. So this is to anticipate and appropriate funds for the investment performance management for salaries, fringes, travel, and training line items. This supports the core infrastructure improvements that include workforce, foundational capabilities, and data infrastructure. The increase in revenue as well as the expenditure line items. Budget amendment number 342 is for the Health Department. This is just to reallocate funds within their payroll budget line items. Number 346. This is for EMS. This is to reallocate funds to replace mattresses at the EMS buildings. This will cover the cost for mattresses and box springs that are needed. Number 352 is solid waste. This is to reallocate funds from the fuel line item to the repairs maintenance buildings line item to maintain operations through the end of the year. Number 354 is for EMS. This is to reallocate funds for EMS collection fee for the Medicaid enhancement fund. North Carolina Association of County Commissioners gets a 3% fee for the EMS cost Medicaid reimbursement.
When you say reimbursement, I mean, explain it just a little bit.
So we've completed an EMS cost Medicaid report every year. And what it does is it looks to see if we have collected all the funds that we should from Medicaid. And NCACC works with us to get those additional funds. So we have to pay them a fee for whatever is collected.
Okay.
Have they collected any?
Oh, yes, sir.
So we collected the funds. Why would we not have a budget amendment for the increased revenue?
We do.
We do?
So. We're not increasing the revenue for this. It's already, it has already been budgeted for.
Since we've changed companies for that.
Now, this is not user fees. This, this is just for the EMS cost Medicaid piece. The next budget amendment, we're going to talk about user fees.
But since we changed companies collected, uh, changed the company that wanted to collect in force. Have, have we seen much of a change? I mean, are we, are we collecting more?
Yes, we have seen an increase in collections.
It was worth to move then.
It, it does appear so.
Okay.
Mr. Daughtry, I don't feel like I answered your question.
Well, no, I'm just saying if you're having additional revenue, then you have additional fees associated with that revenue.
So.
Correct?
This budget amendment is a recognition of additional revenue. This is moving funds in order to pay NCACC their 3% fee. So what happened, there, there was a delay in the invoice for fiscal year 22. We paid fiscal year 22's invoice in the early part of this fiscal year. We don't, didn't have enough funds in this line item to pay fiscal year 23, and that's what we're needing to do. This is always budgeted for, but there was a delay. So we've had to pay two years' worth of payments in this fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
And the final budget amendment is number 363, and that's also EMS. This is to anticipate an increase in user fee collections. And to appropriate the increase towards the collection fee for Cypharon. So Cypharon is one of our collection companies. So we have seen an increase in our user fees. So therefore we have to increase the amount that we're paying them for that service. And we're increasing that by a hundred thousand dollars.
Who, what are we increasing by a hundred thousand? The user fees or?
We're, we have over collected in the revenues. So I'm increasing your revenues in order to pay Cypharon for their fee.
But their fee wouldn't be a hundred thousand dollars.
No, this is, this is an anticipation to get us through the end of the year.
Okay.
So we feel like by the end of the year, we'll need an additional hundred thousand to finish paying them out for their services. Mm hmm.
That's their collection. So when we over collect or over anticipate revenues, then you have additional 5% fees that are taxed on. And this is a result of that. That clear that up?
You know, it, it makes me feel better to, you know, if, I don't mind paying the fee if they're collecting more money for us. I mean, you know,
Oh, they're collecting more money.
It's to our advantage.
Yes, absolutely.
And they got, they got to make a profit, they invest.
Much more effective company at collections than we've had in the past so far. Of course, they can always change, but if it changes, then we'll do something different, but we're satisfied currently. That, that was the last budget amendment.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to item number 10, which is a motion to approve the revised preliminary plat for Riley Crossing subdivision. Mr. Barry Gray.
Good morning.
Good morning. The Riley Crossing preliminary plat, this is a revision. So you have seen this before, I believe, towards the end of last year. That proposal had 51 lots with some road front lots. There were a few road front lots there directly on Imus Church Road. In this revision, they actually have eliminated the road front lots and all lots are going to be served by an internal street. They did some further work with DOT and decided that it was best to eliminate those road front lots. So in their detailed work that they've done since then, they've decided that they're going to need to lose actually three lots. Mainly because of soil types. So they are down to 48 lots in this one. The average lot size now is about 35,900 square feet, which is about eight tenths of an acre. And the planning board has reviewed this revision and does recommend approval. So again, in this case, there'll only be one access. It'll be a one access on the Imus Church Road that will serve all the lots.
How many lots is it?
Um, 48.
I can't read that.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
This is the one Barry that's close to Brogdon Primary School.
It is, not far.
And I think we discussed earlier that it's been no building in that community for quite some time, so.
Right. It's, it's, it's been a number of years, probably decades in this area that we've had an actual major subdivision like this.
The group developing this is from Kerry.
They are.
I'm good whenever. Done on that one?
Yep.
Okay. Next one is a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Eagle Place.
Right. So this is a preliminary plat. So this is a new subdivision submittal. So it's the start of the process with the subdivision. So there's no improvements on the ground at this point. You will see it again when they do the improvements. They're proposing 108 lots. This is off of Rosewood Road. It's beside Eagle, excuse me, Rosewood Valley subdivision. With this on Rosewood Road, when you look at your map, it's kind of flipped. Rosewood Road is to the northwest or the top left side of the page, and at the bottom is the railroad track. There at Rosewood Road, DOT is going to require a left turn lane because of the traffic camps there. And because of the railroad track, there is a 25 foot buffer that they're required to put in as well that, that they have shown on here.
It looks like a small town there.
It is, yes. They're doing, they're kind of doing cluster lots is what they're doing with quite a bit of open space there. It will have a second access that'll connect into Rosewood Valley. So there will be another way in and out of the subdivision as well.
What size are the lots?
Uh, the average lot size is a little over 18,000 square feet, so about four tenths of an acre.
There's a hundred and eight or six lots?
Hundred and eight.
Hundred and eight.
I'm trying to see where you said there were more than one.
It's a.
Interesting.
Yeah, it ties into Rosewood Valley. Let's see if I can, there's a, Eagle Place is a, is a street. If you look on the left side of the page, kind of halfway down.
Uh huh.
Um, in the subdivision next door, Eagle Place, it'll tie into Eagle Place there.
Okay. And then at the top is the other one?
The top is the access onto Rosewood Road.
Okay, okay. I got you now.
So all of these are going to be serviced by septic tanks?
They will. And they will have to have the lots tested before, when the final comes in, they will have to have them tested. So there's no guarantee at this point that they will be able to get these lots quite this small. Some of them may end up being a little bigger. So in the end, they may end up losing some lots depending on how their septic works out. But this is, this is what they're wanting. Whether they actually get the size lots they want, you know, is still to be seen. They still probably could get some of them as small as they want, but there may be some.
Yeah, you gotta have pretty good soil type if you're going to get 15,000 square feet.
You do. That's for sure.
I mean, like sandy soil.
Who's the developer of these?
Buffalo.
William.
Yeah, Buffalo, William Buffalo. It was owned, when we did this, initially it was still owned by NC Railroad, the property was. But they have sold it to William Buffalo, who is the one developing it.
Wow, the railroad actually sold land? That's a rarity. He must have some good contacts.
And this is not farmland, I will say. That's one plus.
Any other questions on that one? It'd be a motion to approve the final plat for Creeks Edge, section five.
Creeks Edge, this is your first final plat today. This is actually the last phase of Creeks Edge. So you won't see any additional phases of this one. This finishes out that project. So in this case, all the improvements are done. They are complete. There are 30 lots. This is on Antioch Road, just north of Big Daddy's Road. And the average lot size with this is about 40,000 square feet, which is a little less than an acre. There are quite a few small lots, but then there's a couple of large lots that kind of throws off that number. But they do have a developed standards letter from DOT and Planning Board does recommend approval.
Any questions? If not, moving to 13 is a motion to approve the final plat for Derby Ridge, section one.
All right, Derby Ridge, this is a final plat as well. Derby Ridge, the preliminary plat, I believe you approved this back the first of last year, I believe in '24. And so with this phase, again, as the previous, all improvements are in. There are 46 lots with this phase. It's on Stony Creek Church Road. If you know where Lancashire is, kind of halfway down Stony Creek Church Road. It is directly across from Lancashire. The average lot size is about 32,000 square feet or about three quarters of an acre. We do have a developed standards letter from DOT and Planning Board does recommend approval.
Barry, I have a question.
Sure.
And this may be kind of an odd question. From. From start to finish of a development, how long does it typically take from plats to construction to purchase and people moving? You know, I ask that question because I'm thinking about schools and school system. And if you've got 48 lots coming in Brogdon, you've got another 108 coming in Rosewood.
Yeah, the hundred, let me give you an example. Gander Lake out on. Pipe for Princeton Road at the county line had, I don't know, probably 300 lots. So it was a large subdivision. Gander Lake, probably by the time they finished their phases, probably, I think the last phase was done a year and a half ago. And that project was started probably in 2014, so maybe. Maybe. And so it's been at least 10 years for that project from basically start to finish to phase out. And they still are building homes in there. They still haven't finished building homes. So large subdivisions like that, it does tend to take, take longer for them to phase out. Smaller subdivisions like Green Acres, for example, which is right beside Rosewood Elementary School, was a smaller subdivision. That one probably, they did that all in one phase at one time, and they were able to do that within a year. So. That one probably, they did that all in one phase at one time, and they were able to do that within a year, so.
For most of these developers, Wayne County developers, or like Brogdon, where we're seeing somebody from Cary come down to purchase land, are some of these?
We're seeing a mix. The, like Stony Creek, the one on Stony Creek Church Road, Derby Ridge, that's the local developer. The one though in Brogdon on Imus Church Road that you mentioned, of course, that's not a local one. It's a mix of both. We're seeing more from out of county doing that, but but I'd say probably right now it's about half is what you're seeing.
Enhance property values, people are selling, increasing the value of what the property is. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Moving on to number fourteen is a motion to approve the lease amendment between GWTA and the city of Goldsboro. I think Andrew has the memo.
So I included a memo in your packet, but in twenty sixteen, GWTA entered into a lease with the city. The city owns the property where their current transfer station is located at, it adjoins Union Station. So it's for all that property, and it was indefinite in length. So it exists as long as there's a need for the transfer station. The county signed on to that lease, not because we have a property interest in it, but there was an agreement that we would assist in repairs to the facility. We would split those costs evenly with the city if it was over a certain amount. So that's the background of the existing lease. And then now moving forward, the city has obtained a grant for a pocket park, and they've been trying to locate an area. It's it's kind of not a playground, but just, you know, kind of like has benches, some, I think, just limited play equipment, things of that nature. And they've identified that little grassy area that's in front of the transfer station that they would like to build the park on. So what we've done is we've, and the city's already approved this, and so it's GWTA, we've exempted that grassy area from the existing lease. And we're asking for you all for approval, again, not because you own the property, because you were original signatory to the lease. So we just need to approve that lease amendment. And there is a provision in there, there were some concerns with the GWTA board about possibly children running out in front of the buses or something like that. So if you look at the map, the exempted part includes the fencing, and it also requires the city of Goldsboro to maintain that fencing in such a way to prevent anyone from being able to access the transfer station. So the only access will be on North Carolina Street and Mulberry. You won't be able to access it from the transfer station. And then GWTA would be responsible for upkeep on the sign that's right there at the corner of North Carolina and Mulberry.
Now, the pocket park, what's the purpose of that? Is this to serve children?
Mike, can I defer to you? Barry's the GWTA chair. He knows a little bit more about the pocket park. Because he toured the facility.
Yeah, it it is a small, small area, so it is going to be limited in its function, but it won't necessarily have play equipment like you would typically see at a park, like with swing sets and slides, that type of thing. It'll be kind of more, if you're interactive, it'll be geared towards also children with handicaps, you know, with limited mobilities. It'll be an inclusive playground, and so there will be no water splash park, that type of thing. It won't be anything like that. And it'll be geared towards children, and even so, children who have limited mobility as well.
And GWTA currently does not use that area. I think the city just,
Just grabs.
just cuts the grass and that's it.
Hey Barry, did you guys ever figure out where the entrance was going to be? I know it was an issue with, you know, safety getting into the park. Did you figure that out?
Yeah, there will be, it'll have an access onto Carolina Street, like the entrance into it will be off of Carolina Street. That fence will stay. Right now, there's a gap in the fence over towards GWTA for access, but that'll be closed up. So people will have to come in from the front side, the North Carolina Street side.
Now, where was the parking for this facility?
The parking, there is road front parking, roadside parking, on directly on Carolina Street in front of the facility. And so they'll be able to park there with parking that's already there on the roadside. Goldsboro says that they're, they're not envisioning it for being like a place you would, a lot of people would drive to. It's more geared towards the community there, so they're envisioning more people would walk or just drive over there from a short distance, but they're not expecting it to be a heavy-use facility, just something for that community.
You know how much the grant was for?
I don't.
I don't. They're in the preliminary stages of that. I think they're doing environmentals. So I think it is going to be a while before that takes shape.
But this lease agreement is just simply to exclude us from having any responsibility to repair anything.
The main thing is GWTA was concerned about the liability, obviously, of, you know, that being included, so they wanted that excluded.
Right.
And Parks and Rec would maintain the whole area. GWTA or the county would have no expenses associated with the park.
We entered into this lease agreement years ago, obviously because the Goldsboro Wayne Transit Authority also serves citizens outside of the city of Goldsboro.
They have a rural route as well.
Thank you.
And we give them money each, it's funded by the county.
Thank you. Thank you, Barry.
All right, moving on to number fifteen is a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between Wayne County and Mount Olive Presbyterian Church for the operation of the Wayne County Public Library's Learning Studio in Mount Olive for the summer of twenty twenty-five.
This is, the Learning Studio is already in operation in Goldsboro, and it's a summer program that the library runs for children with dyslexia, ADHD, and other kind of learning disabilities. And for a while, they've been trying to expand this out in the Mount Olive area because there was a need down there. My understanding is there wasn't adequate or appropriate space at the library down there. So they were working with a partner, and then the Presbyterian Church offered up space at no cost. So they're going to give that a run this summer and see how that works. And basically, it allows them access to two youth rooms, a parlor, side entrance, restroom facilities, and parking areas, again, at no cost. We would fund all the tutors and all the staff involved in the program. And then there was just also some provisions about if, for some reason, there was damage to the property, you know, the county will be responsible for covering that under our insurance policy. And this has been run by our carrier as well, and they're comfortable with it.
Any questions on that? Only from the standpoint that I can't quite understand why there would not be facilities available with the Mount Olive Library.
I think given the nature of the children, they need isolated space. You can't really have, correct me if I'm wrong, Chip, but there's just too much public interaction at the main library, so they needed somewhere separate.
I think maybe the noise level may be a little bit higher than a normal library.
Right.
Okay, all right. That makes more sense. Because as I remember that layout, there were actually rooms in the back that were set aside for that. But you're right, the noise level may be a little bit higher than they anticipated.
I asked the same question, Joe.
Any other questions on that one? If not, we'll move on to sixteen is a motion to approve the audit contract with Nun, Breshear, and Azell accountants for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And their total amount, not exceed, is a hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. I think this was, is this year three on a three-year, two on a three-year contract? Well, they do a remarkable job, that's for sure. Absolutely.
That's going to be my question. If everybody's satisfied.
Beyond. Any other questions on that? If not, we'll move to number seventeen is a motion to approve delegating authority to the county manager to enter into leases of county property for periods of one year or less as provided by North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash two seventy-two.
And this is, the general statute allows if the local government entity is entering to a lease for one year or less, you can delegate to the county manager for that. That has been common practice, and I believe at some point, there was a resolution in place. When we went back and we were reviewing our current policies, we could not find that. So we wanted to bring that back to you, so that way, there's no questions that.
I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I'm just, I just looked, briefly looked at the general statute, and it just, it doesn't say anything pertaining to the county manager. It just says city, city manager, so maybe, you know, you can give me a little help on that.
Yeah, so there's a provision that it's in one sixty-eight, but at the beginning of that chapter, it says that those provisions apply to counties and other local governments as well. It's drafted with the city, but it applies to counties as well. And also, public school systems and other local government entities as well.
Thank you, guys.
The school board has the same policy. Superintendent can enact within a year.
And most boards do have something similar. Most of the time, we have some people who come up who want to do a short-term lease, and especially at the jet port, people may want to tinker or something like that for a couple of months, so. It's kind of streamlined the process a little bit.
I have no issue with that.
Okay. Moving along to number eighteen is a motion to cancel the nine thirty a.m. public hearing on May the sixth, twenty twenty-five for Project Istanbul, and reschedule that hearing for nine thirty a.m. on May the twentieth, twenty twenty-five at the Wayne County Courthouse Annex, two twenty-four East Walnut Street, Goldsboro, North Carolina, to receive public comments regarding economic incentives for Project Istanbul. We're just moving there? Yes, sir.
To the twentieth?
To the twentieth, yes, sir. Number nineteen is a motion to establish a public hearing at nine thirty a.m. on May the twentieth, twenty twenty-five in the Wayne County Courthouse Annex, two twenty-four East Walnut Street, Goldsboro, NC, to receive public comments regarding economic incentives for Project Bull, which is a different project. Will be held that same day. Any questions on those two? If not, we'll move to new business, which we will receive a presentation of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six CIP plan and update from Davenport Financial Advisors. This is for informational only. We're not taking any action. Is that correct? Correct. It's our yearly reviews, yeah, pre-budget. And then, public comments, we'll have a public comment speaking time, which each speaker will have a time limit of four minutes. A county manager's report, a board of commissioners committee report, closed session, we will have closed session. And then you all will take your official portraits for the board of commissioners for this year, and then we'll adjourn after that.
Before we move forward, if I may, every year you schedule a budget work session after the county manager has presented the budget to you. Last year, you did that after the May twenty-first meeting. You started your budget work session after the meeting, and I believe actually completed it that day. So my question is, would you want to schedule it after the next meeting, which would be May twentieth? Or the next week, which begins with Memorial Day, and so of course, there's concerns about some board members traveling. You, the, the reason why I'm suggesting that you do it the week of the May twentieth meeting is you have ethics training on the twenty-second as a board. So if you're going to already be together as a board, you may want to just incorporate all of that.
First question is, is the county manager presenting his budget on May twentieth?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Second question is, when we have the twenty-second, our ethics, are we going to be here for that? Or where are we going to be for that ethics training?
You can actually gather as a board and do it, or you can do it virtually at home.
So it's on all line of?
That is correct.
Chip, by statute, when are you supposed, when are we supposed to approve our budget? Is there a statutory?
By the end of June.
End of June.
And if you don't, you need an interim budget.
Right. So sooner the better.
Well, I mean, as soon as you're comfortable with the budget.
Right.
I present my budget, and then it becomes your budget.
Will we get it ahead of time so we can review it before the twentieth? Because I might like some time just to review it before we have a work session. Make sure I understand it. If it's going to be presented on the twentieth, and that's the first time I see it as a commissioner.
I, I, I agree. Normally, what we, we do is, once he presents the budget, which is the first time we really see it, we schedule a time for us to actually go line by line, department by department through that budget. So, and I have no problem with putting that off a week or whatever to give us time to review it.
Right. I'd just love to have a little bit of time just to look through it. So I don't, when we, when we've had a work session in the past, has it been half a day, all day, has it?
It could be half a day, all day, multiple days. Yeah, I've, we've had them multiple days.
And the public hearing is set, tentatively set for June third.
Those are statutory requirements.
So you do have to have a public hearing, and we usually have that the first meeting in June.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to any of what the historical has been. I would just love to.
And you can't, you can't take action on the budget until you have that public hearing, so.
I'm, I'm fine with the twentieth. If, if, I'm fine with whatever the group determines.
Your late president's value property was off of Old Harvey Sutton Road. In the library, Mr. Daughtry, the library would have forty-eight children in that program.
Oh, that would be a rather loud bunch.
Right.
Thank you, Chip, for looking at that.
You're welcome. They looked it up behind, they, the staff behind me, y'all responded.
Thank you, staff.
Madam Chair, what are your thoughts on the budget work session?
I'm in agreement with, you know, what the rest of the board, you know, has on it. May twentieth is fine with me. Is that what you're?
Mr. Joe, are you good with that?
Yeah, can we do it on the twentieth with kind of an understanding that we may postpone any further comments on it? And maybe even have a second work session on it, maybe a week later or whatever. Because this budget may have a good bit of scrutiny to it. So with that in mind, we can go through it on the twentieth, right after that. We'll have lunch and start right in at that afternoon.
Yes, sir. And what we could do is recess if necessary,
Right.
to a later date. And yet, we'll make certain that, this way, I can include it on the agenda for the twentieth versus calling a special meeting or doing anything that's not just within your normal process. So we'll make certain that we have lunch that day, and then if you need more time, we can recess it until another day.
As I recall these, Tim, we generally can get through these within about four or five hours.
I was planning on six, but it's four or five is quick.
He, he said generally.
And he underlined that.
Over the years, I've limited my questions. That, that is up to great deal. But maybe you can pick up the mantle.
I'll pick up your swag.
There you go.
That'll work great, Carol.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carol.
We have closed session if you would like to make a motion to go to closed session. Tell them.
Our motion to go in closed session.
And that would be to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of the industry, to consider qualifications, performance of a public employee, and to consult with your attorney to retain attorney-client privilege.
Wayne, raise your hand. Katie was kept waiting for you.
I was reading.
I was reading.
And we'll take a five-minute break.
All right, thank you.
Good morning. I call the May 6 regular board meeting. The invocation will be Commissioner Chris Gurley.
All right, let's pray. Good Lord, thank you for bringing us together this morning. Please give us the wisdom and knowledge to carry out the business of our county for the betterment of our citizens, and we appreciate your guidance in this session. In the name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance by Commissioner Echols.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Franklin?
We need to seek approval of the minutes for the April 15, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Okay, thank you for that. We need approval of the agenda for the May 6, 2025 agenda.
So moved.
Thank you for that, and we'll move right into special presentations where we'd like to, item number three, a motion to approve the 2025 May as Mental Health Month in Wayne County as presented by Emily Peacock. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. It's a bright, beautiful morning. We're glad to be here, and we're glad to emphasize that May is Mental Health Month and how important our mental health is to us. No matter what station of life we're in, it affects us in some way, and we appreciate the time that you've given us. With that, I will go read the proclamation. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health condition, whereas there is strong research that animal companionship, human spirituality, religion, recreation, social connections, and work-life balance can help all Americans protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health and other chronic health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support preventive efforts. Now therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2025 as Mental Health Month in Wayne County. We call upon citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Wayne County to recommend our community to increase in awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and assess- accessible services for all people with mental health conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Peacock.
Thank you, Ms. Peacock.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve 2025 Mental Health Month in Wayne County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Peacock.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving on to number four is a motion to approve the 2025 National Nurses Week proclamation is read by Wayne County Health Department Director of Nursing Brenna Wolf. Welcome on up.
Whereas registered nurses in the United States constitute our nation's largest healthcare profession, and as of January 2025, North Carolina is home to 161,630 licensed RNs. And whereas professional nursing is an indispensable component of the patient's safety and the quality of care in both hospital and community settings, and whereas the demand for registered nursing services will be greater than ever because of the aging of the American population, emerging health challenges, the continuing expansion of life-sustaining technologies, and explosive growth of home healthcare services, and whereas more qualified registered nurses are needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in this community, and whereas the cost-effective, safe, and high-quality healthcare services provided by registered nurses will be an increasingly important component of the United States' healthcare delivery system in the future, and whereas along with the American Nurses Association, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners has declared May 6 through 12 as Nurses Week with the theme "The Power of Nurses," with appreciation for nurses', unparalleled impact, and their contributions to healthcare, and an open invitation to thank a nurse for enriching our lives and the world we live in. Therefore be it, now therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners on behalf of the citizens of Wayne County do hereby proclaim May 6 through 12, 2025 as Nurses Week in Wayne County, North Carolina, and encourage all citizens to join in honoring the dedicated nurses who enhance the health and well-being of our community.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the 2025 National Nurses Week proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wolf.
And if you will, before you leave, are these some of our county nurses?
These are nurses.
Please introduce them.
This is Jackie Williams, and she is our Women's Health Nurse. Elizabeth Hernandez, she's a Women's Health Nurse. Jackie, Tracy, sorry, Women's Health Nurse. Tammy Thornton, she has been with us for several years, and she's a jack-of-all-trades at the Health Department. Jordan Welch, she is our TV nurse and learning to do STD. Bonnie Bruce, she is in our immunizations program, and Allison Scorch is our Director of Nursing.
Thank you, nurses, for what you do, and I know you're going to enjoy your new facility.
Great job. Thank you for that. Item number five is a motion to approve the 2025 National Law Enforcement Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day proclamation is read by Sheriff Larry Pierce.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sheriff Pierce.
Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it fell is National Law Enforcement Week to pay special attention to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others, and whereas there were approximately 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Wayne County Sheriff's Office, and whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently 26,947 law enforcement officers in the United States who have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, and whereas National Law Enforcement Week will be observed this year from May 11 through May 17, and whereas law enforcement officers are charged with pursuing justice for all individuals and performing their duties with fidelity to the constitutional and civil rights of the individuals that the law enforcement officers serve, and whereas the resolve of law enforcement officers in the service of their communities is unyielding despite inherent dangers in the performance of their duties, and the vigilance, compassion, and decency of law enforcement officers are the best defense of society against individuals who seek to do harm, and whereas Peace Officers' Memorial Day, May 15, 2025, honors the 165 law enforcement officers who died in the line of duty in 2025, and all U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff in honor of fallen officers and their families, and whereas we especially recognize Sergeant Matthew R. Fishman of the Wayne County Sheriff's Office, who gave his life in the line of duty in August of 2022, and whereas all citizens of Wayne County should remember and recognize the men and women who served and protect them, working in the county every hour of every day to ensure they remain safe. Now therefore, be it further resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners formally designate May 11, 2025 through May 17, 2025, as National Law Enforcement Week in Wayne County, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we approve the 2025 National Law Enforcement Week.
Sheriff Pierce, it doesn't seem like it's been since 2022 we've lost.
No, ma'am.
It's just...
We just hope and pray it'll happen again.
We still pray for his family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry, do you... I go by and look at the monument, but we've lost more law enforcement officers than EMS and fire, and now, do you remember since we've been keeping record, how many? What is it, eight or 10 maybe?
I know we've lost three in Wayne County, and I'm not sure exactly the total, but it's around 10, I think, total.
Yeah.
Three deputies.
Right, this goes back to before we started keeping record of what in the fold is our fifth. This goes back to before we started keeping record of what in the 40s or 50s.
Yes.
Something like that.
Actually, in 1800, Chief...
The sheriff, that's right.
Cor, Cor.
Cor.
Yeah, yeah. Cor Pender. He was killed in an ambush, holding a prisoner. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to number six is a motion to approve the 2025 Clerks to the Board of County Commissioners Week proclamation is read by Assistant County Manager Ginger Moore.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to recognize the 2025 Clerks to the Board Commissioners Week. Whereas the role of the clerk to the Board of County Commissioners is crucial for maintaining an informed community and facilitating effective local governance through communication among citizens, governing bodies, and administrative departments, and whereas the position of the clerk, one of the oldest in local government, continues to be essential as the official record keepers of the counties with responsibilities that are deeply rooted in history, and whereas North Carolina General Statute 153A-111 requires every Board of County Commissioners to appoint or designate a clerk to the Board to perform any duties that may be required by law or the Board of Commissioners, including but not limited to the preparation, filing, and protection of local government records, which are vital for accountability and transparency. And whereas clerks enhance their professional skills through active participation in the North Carolina Association of County Clerks to the Board of Commissioners, which in partnership with the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill School of Government and the International Institute of Municipal Clerks offers nationally recognized certification programs and continuous professional education, and whereas clerks, through their dedication to professional development, not only improve the efficacy of their offices, but also bring positive recognition to their counties by participating in advanced education and obtaining profession-related certifications. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners that May 4th through May 10th, 2025, will be recognized as clerk to the Boards of County Commissioners Week in Wayne County and extends its appreciation to the Clerk of the Board Carol Bowden and Deputy Clerk to the Board Kayla Whitley and to all county clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the county they represent. Adopted the sixth day of May, 2025.
Madam Chair.
I would like to make that motion to approve that proclamation, please.
Can our two clerks stand up, please, and be recognized? Thank you, ladies, for what you do. We appreciate you.
All right. Moving on to number seven, is a motion to approve the 2025 Medical Laboratory Professionals Week proclamation is read by Wayne County Health Department Laboratory Manager Leah Grimer. Good morning, Mona.
Thank you for letting us be here this morning. I'm going to read the proclamation from North Carolina Governor, because I didn't get it in front of you in time, so I apologize for that. Sorry. Whereas medical and treatment decisions for the residents of North Carolina depend on timely and accurate test results, and whereas timely and accurate test results play a vital role in disease diagnosis and prevention, and whereas today's standards of practicing medicine would be impossible without the scientific tests performed daily in medical laboratories, and whereas laboratory professionals, including pathologists, medical laboratory scientists, cytotechnologists, histotechnologists, medical laboratory technicians, lobotomists, and histological technicians are highly trained specialists who perform and evaluate laboratory tests to detect and diagnose disease while also monitoring treatments, and whereas dedicated clinical laboratory science practitioners maintain the highest standards and continually work to improve the quality of laboratory services, and whereas detection of emerging and reemerging pathogens demonstrates the critical role laboratory professionals play in the response to public health emergencies, and whereas the residents of North Carolina benefit daily from the significant contributions of medical laboratory professionals for their health and wellness. Now therefore, Josh Stein, Governor of the State of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April 20 to 26, 2025, as Medical Laboratory Professionals Week as North Carolina and commend its observance to all citizens.
I have a motion, please.
So move.
Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you to all the nurses and the medical laboratory. Without y'all, Wayne County wouldn't be as healthy as it is. We know it's a tough job, daily job of having to deal with a lot of stress and issues and seeing different patients and everything, but thank you for doing it. Thank you for being committed to your job.
Yes, Madam Chair. Appointment Committee met this morning, and we are making the following recommendations. The reaparlment of Donald Barnes to the Wayne Community College Board of Trustees. We are, we're not having a vote on any of these. The reaparlment of Charles Broadman and Amy Hartley to the Eastern Carolina Workforce Development Board. The appointment of Lavelle Payne to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council as the substance use professional. To reappoint Emily Fine to the Animal Control Advisory Board. Reappoint DeNora Keith to the Latino Council. To appoint Edward Davis to the Wayne County Tourism Development Alliance Board. And to appoint Mary E. Stevens as Senior Tar Heel Legislative Alternate as a form. Those votes will be on our agenda on May 20th. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I would be looking next for approval of our consent agenda that we... So move.
I have a motion for consent. Thank you, Commissioner Lewis.
Thank you for that. And then we'll move to new business, where we'll have a presentation of the 2025-2026 CIP Plan and Update from Davenport Financial Advisors. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. There's a hard copy coming around for your library. It'll be exactly what's on the screen, so you'll be able to follow it either way, whatever's easiest. This is an update. We made this presentation almost exactly a year ago, so I think it was May 7 of '24. So this has become an annual update, primarily focused on capital, capital planning and capital funding of projects. There are page numbers in the bottom right corner. There's several things in the appendix that I don't plan to go through, but it might be helpful to you down the road as a resource. And I don't believe we're looking for any action from you all today, just information, but happy to answer questions as we go.
You can drive. If you pull up, you can drive.
Okay, got it.
You can drive Mr. Stelso.
All right. Should be able to, let's see which one of these. There we go, okay. All right, as I said, there's the page numbers in the bottom right corner, several things in the appendix. The details surrounding the capital improvement program, we've got a summary of it that we're going to look at, but all the detail is there, project by project, department by department, all of the detail around the existing debt that's in place today for the county, the last rating reports from the rating agencies, copies of y'all's financial policies, the school funding agreement. We will be talking about county projects and school projects, so the school funding agreement is relevant. And then there's sewer projects that are getting ready to be underway, and there's a state revolving fund loan commitment to fund that sewer project. That's a state program specific for utilities, and we thought it would be helpful to have that in there just in case you wanted to reference it. So we're really going to cover those top several sections. And again, please, please jump in with questions. I'm happy to address them as we go. I think I've presented to everyone before, but just again, Ted Cole with Davenport, we have served as the financial advisor to the county for a number of years, and primarily around topics like what we'll discuss today, which is credit ratings, capital planning, helping with debt issuance when that's required, and other things that come up from time to time, generally finance-related. In terms of bond ratings, the county does have ratings outstanding from the two most commonly used rating agencies, Moody's and Standard and Coors. You can see in the table in the bottom left, remember AAA is the highest rating that any local government can achieve. You all are a AA II from Moody's and a, what we call a straight AA from S&amp;P. Those two ratings are in parity with one another, and you're two notches away from that highest rating that is, that's available. And over time, this will evolve. They look at you every year. They may not talk to your staff every year, but they look at audits, they look at budgets, they pull data from census reports, and they, they review the credit. But periodically, they do want to talk with county staff, and there's opportunities for that rating to evolve over time, and at a minimum, our goal is to maintain that rating where it is and try to take advantage of opportunities to increase that rating. How it applies to this topic is a higher bond rating generally reduces your borrowing costs, which helps make everything a little more affordable for, for capital. On the right-hand side, we subscribe to a database that Moody's maintains, and that upper-right part of the chart, national counties, we call them credits, but it's counties across the country that are rated AAA. There's 114. AA, there's 495, one of which is Wayne County. And then within North Carolina, right below that, there's 14 AAA counties and 40 AA counties, again, one of which is, is Wayne County. So it gives you a little perspective on your rating and some of the other counties across the state in particular that are rated in the similar range as you all. Briefly, on page five, and I'll focus on the upper left with Moody's. How do they go about rating local governments? What's the process? They're very data-driven, right? So they're looking, again, they're looking at audits, they're looking at budgets, census data. Moody's has four areas of focus. The first is the economy, and that's capturing things like your tax base, your tax base per capita, and the economic output of the region. They often do it at like an MSA level, Metropolitan Statistical Area, not necessarily county by county. And we've got a box there under long-term control, because those are things that you really don't control year to year, budget to budget, right? Growing the tax base better or more productive output as an economy is, is more of a longer-term initiative. So that's thus the checkbox there under long-term. Financial performance is 30% of the rating, so it's how you budget, how you perform relative to budget, your reserve levels, things like that. You do have a little more control over some of those things as you're making decisions about budgets and, and funding, operating, and capital expenditures. Institutional framework is 10% of the rating. That is purely a function of being in North Carolina County, so the rating agencies look at every state, they look at the local government setup, and they view North Carolina as a good local government model, you know, compared to other states. Generally and relatively, you have a decent amount of control over your budgets as a North Carolina county that other counties and other states may, may not have quite as, the same level of control. So again, it's not anything you control, but it's assigned as, as a virtue of being in North Carolina County, and they, they view it very well. Finally, leverage. So it's actually debt that you would issue, your pension obligations, your pension employment benefit obligations, so it's debt and debt-like items, and that's also 30% of the rating. So it gives you a little bit of a breakdown, right? They tend to look at a very broad range of things when they're assigning the credit rating. We often think of it, it's all tied to debt. It's usually happening when we're talking about issuing debt, but they look at a broader range of measures than just your debt profile. All right. So we, a couple of slides on fund balance, and then we're going to turn our attention to debt. Page seven, the upper-left chart is graphing the gold line as your general fund revenues, and we're looking at fiscal year 18 through 24, so we've got a, you know, about a seven-year look back, and you can see the gold line revenues compared to the bars, right? The dark green portion is your operating expenses in the general fund, lighter green is debt service, and then the grayish color is transfers out, primarily for capital. In most all of these years, in all of these years, the revenues have outperformed the operating and debt service. In certain years, the transfers out and capital have exceeded the, the gold line, but they have historically been used for one-time capital projects, right? So using reserves in some cases to fund projects as opposed to issuing debt. And as a result, directly below that, where we're tracking your fund balances for the same years, you can see that's ebbed and flowed a little bit. And generally speaking, any year where the fund balance has dropped, it's not because there's some structural imbalance in your budget. It's because there's been a decision to either fund projects with, with cash or front projects with cash and then reimburse yourselves later through a debt issuance. And, and over this period of time, you've basically gotten those reserves back to where they started and then some in terms of total dollars. The dark green portion is the unassigned fund balance, talking about that bottom-left chart. The green is the unassigned, and that is the component of your fund balance over which you all have the most control. It's really sort of the, the part that gives you all of your cash flow, and that's basically at the high watermark over this seven-year period. So as it relates to fund balance in your policy, on page eight on the left, the policy is stated there, and it essentially says, "We want to maintain at least 14% of the unassigned fund balance," just that, that one component, the unassigned fund balance, at or above 14% of our general fund budget. And you can see that's the red line, and over these seven years, you have managed at that 14% or above in some cases. And it's been up and down. Again, the downs are usually spending cash for capital, avoiding debt or, or fronting money for projects, and then paying yourselves back with debt later. And that's really tied to the Local Government Commission. They don't want you borrowing money for projects until the project is fully designed and bid, so you often have to front some money to get to that point, and there's some of that that's been going on. So you're in compliance with your policy, and fiscal '24, you ended up, you know, comfortably above that policy level. And then on the right-hand side is that peer comparison. So Wayne County is that gold bar. This is that unassigned fund balance, just that part, as a percent of your budget, you're sitting at, let's just call it, you know, 28%. And then the, the lighter green bars are those national counties, AAA, AA, single A. And the darker green are the North Carolina counties. Generally speaking, you want your bar further to the right, higher percentage is better. And when you compare yourselves, particularly to the North Carolina counties, you are above the AAA median, which is the midpoint for that group, a little below the AA median. Those are the bars, the green bars. That's the midpoint of each group. And then that blue line will show you the min and the max within that group. So we've got the median in the bar, and then the blue line shows you the min and the max, and you are comfortably in the, right on top of the median, and certainly not an outlier on the low end. So good policy, you're in compliance and have been for a number of years. When you've used fund balance, it's been for capital, not to supplement operating, and you compare well to other similarly or even higher-rated... and you compare well to other similarly or even higher-rated counties. I think that's all a very good story.
Could I, could I ask a point here? In looking at that, I think you mentioned that our unassigned fund balance was at 28%?
Approximately, yes, sir. Finishing in FY '24.
And if I look at the NC median, would you say that'd be about 32, 33%?
That looks about right. That's the median for the double A.
So we're a little bit below the median.
A little below the median, but when you look at that blue line, you've got somebody in that group that's as low as, call it 10%,
Oh, wow.
And somebody that's getting closer to 90%. So it's a pretty wide range within that. I think there are 40 counties that fall into that group.
Okay.
Okay? All right. So the rest of this book is about debt, and we're going to start with the debt that's on the books today. And in the, in the graph in the upper left, we have shown historically, this is debt service in the graph, annual payments on a fiscal year basis. And we go back to 2015, where your annual payment for this debt was around $4 million, and you can see over time, as you've been funding projects, taking on debt, that payment has stepped up to almost a high watermark of a little over 16 million a year. That's the gray, that's the historical, and now the, the green bars are sort of this year going forward. And all in, you can see in the bottom left, there's about $144 million of debt outstanding. It's been issued over time for different projects. Of that 144, about $100 million of that has been issued for county projects. About 44 million, 43 million has been issued for school projects, but I would also say there's been, in recent years, fairly significant grant dollars that have come in for school projects. So there's been more capital investment in schools than what is necessarily shown by just the debt outstanding, and I think that's important. Everything is fixed rate, so the, the debt payments are not going to change unless you choose to refund them or accelerate the payments. And you can see there's a nice general decline, right? Every year, the payment's dropping, some years more than others, which is giving us a really good starting point for what's coming in the future, what kind of projects are being requested, what kind of projects are y'all going to need to think about going forward to fund, and whether it's cash-funded or debt-funded.
Question.
Yes, sir.
This debt is owed to the LGC?
The, the LGC is, oversees the issuance of it, but it is, it is actually held by, in some cases, individual investors, or we've done bank loans. So they oversee it, they're making sure that it was all issued properly, they have to approve it, they're making sure all the payments are being made, they do that for everybody, but we don't technically owe them any money. It's, it's held by private lenders or investors. The table on the right shows you the principal per year, the interest. You're, you're paying back nine to 10 million dollars a year of principal. And that far-right column, 10-year payout, that's a percentage. Higher is better, and what it's measuring is how much of that 144 million of principal is paid back in the next 10 years. So it's forward-looking, and higher is better because it indicates you're amortizing the debt more quickly, you're not backloading it. You'll see here in a moment, you do have a policy, but essentially what it's saying is 10 years from now, that first number, 10 years from now, 65% of the debt that's on the books today will have been repaid according to the schedule. And, and that's, that's just good planning. That's also why your annual payments are going down over time. It's a, it's a rapid decline, which is going to be helpful to you. In terms of debt policies, page 11, there's three debt policies that are in place, they're in the policy document in the appendix. We track them regularly. These are things that the LGC would look at, the rating agencies look at when they're looking at you, bank underwriting and credit people will look at. The, the top left is that payout ratio, and remember, that's the one where higher is better. The red line in that upper-left chart is at 50%. We don't want to fall below 50%, so we want the green bars above the red line, and they are. You're in compliance and then some. The middle graph is debt to assess value, so the amount of debt outstanding, the 144 million right now, as a percent of your tax base, which is a little over 13 billion. When we do that math, your debt to assess value is about 1.48, and you can see it's declining. And you have a policy that says, we don't want to go above 2%. This one, lower is better, lower burden. And so when you look at this, you have room within your policy to take on some additional debt if you choose to, and, and that's where we get into the discussion about debt capacity. The county has debt capacity within this policy. You also have it within the one on the right-hand side, which is your annual payment as a percent of your budget. How much of your budget's going to your debt payments? Your policy says, we don't want to go above 12%, lower's better. You're at 10% and declining, so both the middle and the right-hand side chart are showing that we're in compliance with our policy and we have capacity. Said another way, within that ratio, we could take on some additional debt if we choose, not unlimited, but some amount. And, and having the conversation we're about to have with your capital plan and the potential for some additional debt, very reasonable conversation. The other side of the discussion, is it affordable, right? So there's capacity, and then we're going to discuss the affordability of it here in a moment. At the very bottom, you can see how you compare to those same peer groups, the national and North Carolina rated counties. And similar to fund balance, you know, you might be a little bit above in this case, the medians, the one in the middle, you're a little bit above, the one on the right, you're actually sort of in between the double and AAA, but not an outlier one way or the other. So the, the, the policy is, you're in compliance with the policy, and you compare well to other similarly rated communities or counties. Not an over-leveraged position, I guess is what I would leave you with.
Yeah, but in looking at that, we actually all recognize that as we took on this debt for the jail and for the human services building, that we would be much higher than we have historically.
Yes.
But that will drop off dramatically.
That's right. And that's the beauty of doing this annually like we are. When we're working through this for staff, we're always looking back at the, the prior year's book and maybe two years, just to see how the trends have held. And yeah, we've been, we've been signaling this and talking about this for, for a number of years as the capital plan has evolved.
Okay.
All right. So now we're going to talk about the affordability, and I know there's a lot of small numbers, and it's even a little faint on my page, I apologize. It's a little, it's not as dark as it could be. I'm on page 13, and this is, we have two models. We have a county model and a school model, just to measure the affordability of your debt and your future debt. This is the revenues, the detail of the revenues that are running through our county model. And you can see there's several columns, eight or 10 columns. Those are sources of funding in the county debt model that you can tie back to the budget that have been instituted over time as you've been looking at additional projects and saying, hey, we need to bring more revenue into this model to make sure we can make the payments. This is all the detail. So as you work your way from left to right, everything's on a fiscal year basis, beginning with the year you're about to go into, fiscal '26. So for example, column B is 2.4 million. That was a number that was established when we did this in '22 as a baseline appropriation every year for county debt. We're, we're going to hold that constant, that's the concept. So column B is flat at 2.4 million dollars a year. It's in your budget, and we're assuming it will continue to be in your budget. Column C is a tax rate that was dedicated to capital beginning in 2022. It was originally 4.4 cents. With the revale, those same dollars are about 3.2 cents. There's a footnote two that you can read to, to look at that. So it's a continuation of a prior appropriation of 4.4 pennies, and there is some growth. We are assuming that your tax base is going to grow by one and a half percent per year. That's kind of the, the planning assumption, that's consistent with what we've done in the past, and we always revisit it with staff before we make this presentation. So that is an ongoing revenue source with some growth. Column D is another tax rate dedication to capital. This one was done in 2023, and that one was originally one cent. Well, with the revale, that, those dollars are now generated by .7 cents, but it's the same dollars with one and a half percent growth. Annual contribution to the plan. General fund appropriation dedicated to capital reserves, another commitment that was made in previous years that we've continued, 880,000 a year. Column F is a little bit of dollars to be, continue to be collected for a couple of years for some radio loans to some fire systems. Column G with your Department of Health and DSS and health building, there is a mechanism from the state, I'm talking about column G, whereby you can get, as a county, you can get reimbursed by the state for a portion of the depreciation and a portion of the interest on debt for a DSS health facility. And that's a recognition. Column G is, is that's a revenue that would come back to the county through that state reimbursement mechanism.
Who computed that?
We computed it along with staff and kind of collaborated on it, and, and what we do, if you look at footnote six, I know it's a little convoluted, but it's the DSS health building. DSS was expected to represent about 50% of the building footprint, and then you can see that we're, with that, we're able to get 50% of the debt, the interest on the DSS portion, and 50% of the depreciation on the DSS portion. So it's a little convoluted, but...
And that's where my question is, because I would assume that DSS occupies more than 50% of the building.
And I think if they do, we'll have an opportunity to improve those revenues coming back. I think that's something that'll be done every year, Angie.
And we want to make sure that the state pays their appropriate amount.
Hundred percent, absolutely. And, and...
Their fair share, so.
I'd like to think, based on that, there's a little bit of upside maybe to these revenue sources that will potentially be revenues, which will only help us.
Will it also be optional for the health department to get reimbursement as well too?
I don't think that applies to the health facility. I think it's specific to DSS.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? And then H is, you might remember, there was some street work that was done in some neighborhoods and some assessments that were levied on those neighborhoods. Those monies are coming back, that debt will be done in a couple of years. And then I is annual dollars that you can, you can, you have funded from current year revenues and expectation that you'll continue to fund for pay-go funding, cash-funded projects is kind of our baseline. So you go all the way across, and, and from now on, all you're going to see is column J. That is the sum of all of those revenue sources. We don't want to repeat every, every one of these in the next few slides, but that's how we get to roughly 10 and a half million dollars of revenues that are coming in to the county capital model. And you can see they're growing because some of these revenues are assumed to grow. Okay? That's just the county model. All right. So, so now what we've done with that behind us is we've shown you the full model, and what we're doing here on page 14 on the left, column B is in void, is the annual debt service for the county bonds that are outstanding today. We have nothing new in here yet, so this is just the, the allocation of your current year debts, or current and future year debt service budget for non-school obligations, 9.7 million, and it's stepping down. Column C and E, C and D are placeholders. We'll talk about those in a moment. So that's a payment you got to make for B, and then the annual pay-go, baseline pay-go a million two. So column F is simply adding up the B and E. Those are the payments in our base case that we have to make before any new projects are funded. Column G is the revenue we just discussed on the prior page, 10 and a half million, and it's growing. So what we look at is we're comparing F and G, that's what column H is looking at. F is dollars going out, G is dollars coming in, and H is measuring those against one another, and all but one year, there's more dollars available in the model than, than payments going out, right? And that's where we want to be as a starting point, because again, we haven't talked about new projects yet. The first year, we're about 389,000 short, but importantly, way over in column I, you have a beginning reserve in that county model of a little over 12 million dollars. Those are dedicated revenues that have been collected in prior years, not used and saved for future use. And you all ultimately, and future boards, have discretion over how that's used. What you're going to see is we're going to assume that those dollars can be used to help pay for the new capital projects. For now, cop page 14, they're just, those dollars are accumulating for illustration purposes.
So if I'm correct, when we implemented the 4.4 cent...
Right.
For capital, we had not borrowed the money for that, so we started to accumulate a surplus in the fund. Now that we borrowed the money, now it's going to be drawn down, but we do have a, a beginning balance, so to speak.
Correct, yes. There, some of those revenue sources that we looked on on the prior page were put in place in anticipation of the projects coming, and you had a few years where you could bank some of that money early on with the intention that we'd be needing them in later years. And this, this is a pot of money that is separate and apart from the fund balance we talked about earlier, right? It's not in that money, it's not in that 28% number I gave you. This is separate, and although completely under y'all's control, it is, it is outside of the fund balance discussion.
Ken, you got that? You looked a little puzzled, but...
I'm listening.
Rather than waiting until we actually borrowed the money and then increased taxes accordingly, we did that in advance to build up a fund balance before we actually borrowed the monies.
And this is money that lives on our books.
It does.
On your books, it's earning interest, you, no outside restrictions on it whatsoever. It's county commissioner-controlled dollars.
Set aside right now for capital projects.
Correct.
Proactive government accounting.
School, there, there's school funding agreement, it's in the back, it's been in place for a number of years, and it's basically guiding how we manage the, the school model. Counties agreed to set aside $2 million a year of sales tax for school capital. Any sales tax above that is used for school debt service. Lottery funds are used for school debt service, and in the future, if there's ever a project that is needed that exceeds the resources in the school model, it's at y'all's discretion to consider how to fund it.
Question. County agrees to set aside $2 million of sales tax annually for school capital. Where does that come from?
Current year sales tax receipts.
So that's not 40, 42 sales tax funds?
It's Article 40 and 42 sales tax, a portion of which is restricted for school capital and school debt service. And it's current year revenues that are coming in, and I guess, Angie, it's a direct offset for a $2 million expense that you start with in the budget for school capital.
Right. But that money's required to be set aside for schools, correct?
A portion of that sales tax is restricted.
So there's no other sales tax that the county sets aside for schools?
Um...
Of any other sales tax revenue?
Beyond that $2 million, I guess there would potentially be additional sales tax revenue.
But for capital projects, it's really those two articles.
Those two articles. What now?
The school sales tax capital reserve fund.
Let's, the, page 16 may help answer part of that.
Yes.
Like the county model, this is all-inclusive. Starting on the left is the debt payments already committed to. That's the allocation for schools, 6 million, steps down to 4... That's the allocation for schools, six million, steps down to four point five and so on. Column C for now is blank. We're not talking about new projects yet. Column D is an acknowledgement that we're going to fund at least two million dollars a year of pay go investment in school capital. So column E becomes the payments to be made between debt service and pay go, eight million, six and a half, six point four, and so on. Two primary funding sources in the school models, columns F and G. F is restricted sales tax that is is restricted for school capital or debt service that's eligibility to be spent on actual cash funding of projects or to pay debt service on school capital. Seven point eight million. We're holding that flat for three years, and then we're building in some some growth that was at one percent per year growth after fiscal year twenty-eight. And then lottery funding that comes from the state annually, one point two million a year. Column H is the the last year of a subsidy you get from the federal government for an older piece of debt that's going to mature, that's comes back to you or has historically every year, but it's going to end because the debt it's associated with will be paid off, not because the program's ending. So column I becomes the sum of F, G, and H, right? And like the prior model for the county, J is a measurement on an annual basis of dollars going out in column E compared to revenues identified in I. And in this case, every year we're positive, right? We're to the good in terms of revenues available within the school funding model. And like the county in the upper right corner of K, there's about five point seven million that has been accumulated in prior years that wasn't needed but is available going forward to fund school capital. And that also is separate and apart from your general fund fund balance. But it is, they are dollars specific to school as opposed to county capital.
So the seven point eight restricted sales tax, is that article forty forty-two sales tax funds?
Correct.
It would be. And then we have lottery funds.
Correct.
So those funds are collect, well, they're collected at the state level, right? Article forty forty-two, that's a that's a state tax.
They collect it and then disperse it.
It's dispersed to us. So what has the what has the citizen of Wayne put into school construction as a taxpayer?
Well, there's the difference between the operating budget and the capital budget, right? This is just the capital side.
Right.
And.
On the capital side, let me be more specific.
Yeah, I mean, we'll round up seven, eight, nine million dollars a year, but I mean, it's it's hard to know who pays all the sales tax. I mean, you would think it's county residents, but sales tax is distributed by the state under different methodologies. And then lottery, I I believe the calculation for lottery is statewide, and then they distribute it. So I don't know that all the lottery dollars you receive necessarily originate in Wayne County. I'm not sure that that's a direct dollar for dollar.
But my I guess my point is is that the majority of debt service that we pay for school construction comes from state funds that are appropriated to the county.
I think that's fair, yeah, distributed to the county, that's right.
For forty forty-two cent sales tax and lottery.
Correct.
The debt service part of it that comes out of the county, correct or not?
No, that those two dollar amounts, F and F and G, those are the revenues we've been talking about. That's what's paying for your debt and your pay go.
State funds.
I got you.
There's not a, I guess, if this said in other words, it's not a dedicated tax rate associated with that. It's it's from these state funded or state distributed dollars.
So how long has it been set at one point two million dollars from the North Carolina Educational Lottery?
It it fluctuates. So last year, we allocated one point four. So we just we monitor what our distribution is. So it actually has dropped since last year by two hundred thousand.
Did the state ever freeze those funds at some point that a county could only get so much funding from the lottery? Was it ever frozen?
There there was a, and just a couple of things. I'm looking at roughly a decade worth of lottery fund distributions, and it looks to me like, you know, in twenty eleven, the high watermark was about a million five seven, one point five seven that came to Wayne County in lottery. There was a year where it was seven hundred thousand and everything in between. Most of recent year was about a million two, which is why we've reverted to the million two projection. There was a time when there were the needs-based lottery grants that were being distributed to school projects early on. Part of that program was if you get a grant from DPI, they were going to freeze or hold your lottery money for five years. That was kind of the trade off of getting the grant. Into that period of time, they 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 re they redid the program and they stopped withholding the lottery money.
Right.
So.
We benefited from that in Wayne.
That's right. So there there may be, you you could go back and look at certain counties, and there'll be a two or three year period where the lottery was not distributed, but that they stopped that and redid the grant program.
I think one point to note for the average citizen is when a school costs thirty-eight million dollars, the North Carolina Education Lottery is not going to pay for the totality of that construction.
It is it is not.
It is, it really just affords us an opportunity for debt service that the citizen of Wayne has to potentially take on.
Could I ask why we did not include any proposed new school debt? Because we took on an obligation on Rosewood. Rosewood School for borrowing up to, I think, twelve million dollars. So would that not? I'm just ahead of you. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We wanted to establish what you've already committed to.
Okay.
With money in hand. And and both of those models that we've just looked at, county and schools, are sustainable, right? I mean, the the revenues we've identified and projected are equal to or greater than the payments that are expected to be made out of both funds. So now we want to talk about what's potentially ahead of you.
Okay. You do realize he looked ahead of the book?
I did.
I saw him. Do what now? I did not look ahead. If I had, I would have asked.
This is a summary. The the three or four pages in the appendix will give you all the detail of this if you want to go and look at all the individual projects. But the first eleven lines are the uses or the projects, and they're categorized by major major department or specific project. So school funding agreement, that's two million a year going out that that's been committed to for capital. And that's made up of many probably smaller projects. General fund departments across line five. You want to see what's in any one of those, we can go back and look at it. But off the top of my head, it's things like EMS station thirteen and fourteen, some improvements at Maxwell, but it's a it's a wide range of things that get rolled up into line five. Rosewood Middle, thirty-eight and change, Rosewood Elementary, three, Jetport, an annual contribution for capital, Community College. And then some line ten is some reoccurring general funding, IT vehicles, things like that. So so the CIP, as we've modeled it, we're looking to fund line eleven every year. How are we going to fund all of those projects over this five-year period? On the far right, it's about a hundred and nine million dollars. The bottom half of the page is where the dollars are coming from. And so, for example, go down the line, particularly in twenty-six, right? There's a state appropriation for Rosewood, a little over twenty-five million. That is money that's been committed. An additional state appropriation that's expected of four point one million for Rosewood. Some bond money that we borrowed in prior years that is no longer needed for those particular projects that we borrowed for because you subsequently got additional funding. And we've got the ability to use those unspent monies on 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 the new project for Rosewood. So line sixteen is money you have in the bank that you've already borrowed and you're already making payments on. The project that it was borrowed for, additional dollars came in that were above and beyond, or you earned interest on those monies, and we were able to rededicate it or reallocate it, I should say, to the Rosewood project.
Could you give me a little bit more explanation on that? So would that possibly be where we did not spend all of the monies that we had borrowed for Fremont? Had some funds left over, and we are reallocating them here for Rosewood?
It'd be your twenty twenty borrowing and your twenty twenty-two. So, yes, Fremont, but then before that, the twenty twenty was nine one one, voting machines.
So we had borrowed monies but not used all of those funds, and we reallocated those actually for the Rosewood or whatever.
We will be, yes.
That's that, yeah, that's the the plan, the proposal, if you will. I mean, those borrowings are closed at very attractive rates, at rates lower than we could borrow today. And the bank that we borrowed from has said, if you want to reallocate that unused money to a different project, we're fine with that. They don't have a problem with that. And there's really no reason to pay it off only to go back out and borrow at a higher interest.
Well, that was my other question, and that is, the lender has authorized us to use those funds for another project versus that project.
The lender has, the bond attorneys have signed off on it, and we're in the midst of getting the local government commission's approval as well. They've indicated they don't have any problem with it, but they do need.
Well, it makes sense. If you've already borrowed the money at a little rate, why pay it off and?
That's right.
Borrow it again.
So we would expect that that once the LGC considers it, and it will be more of a miscellaneous item, that we're free to to spend that money when ready.
Okay, thank you.
The the key takeaway as it relates to to potential debt on line eighteen is, excuse me, page eighteen, is line twenty and twenty-one. Twenty is an SRF loan. Remember, that's a state funding program for utilities. There's a sewer project. Staff will be able to tell you exactly what that project is, but we've got a commitment from the state through the revolving loan fund for two point eight million dollars. That's line twenty. That is a piece of debt that we're going to move forward with to fund that project. Low interest loan. It's a pretty good program for utility needs.
I have a question. Going back, going back up to line eight, you have your jet port, fourteen, one point four million, two point four, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, four point nine, and so on. Then you go to line eighteen. There's nothing in twenty twenty-six. In twenty twenty-seven, there is one point eight million, twenty twenty-eight, three point one, six point seven. And for total, you have sixteen million, six hundred fifty. And for total in line eighteen, you have eleven million, six hundred million. Explain that to me, please.
Right, so so line eight is the sum of all the project costs, like you said, sixteen point six over this five years. Line eighteen is grant funding for Jetport that we would expect to get equal to eleven point six. So the grant funding won't fund the entire project, and there's a local match and I think maybe state funding or local dollars that you've got to contribute for the difference roughly.
Five million.
Five million dollars.
Thank you.
Okay. So I explained line twenty as a revolving loan that is moving forward for sewer. Line twenty-one is some additional, probably bank financings for projects that aren't otherwise funded with cash or grants. So when you look at twenty twenty-six on the green bar, seven point four million, that is the basically the current gap for Rosewood Middle and Elementary, right? So you got Rosewood project cost, Middle and Elementary. We've got the state appropriation, some additional state dollars, the reallocation of bond money, and the difference is about seven point four million. The expectation is that we could fund that in the budget that's you're working on now, FY twenty-six. You've got plenty of money to get that project started. In our discussions with staff, if we do that borrowing, I think the expectation would be it would happen about a year from now. The cash that you've got committed through the state and those other bond monies will carry that project. And we figured, let's see how all of that goes. It may be that we don't need to borrow as much, potentially at all. But there wasn't a need to go and put that borrowing in place right now because you've got plenty of funding to carry that project for a while.
And the interests are probably be lower, hopefully.
We hope so, right? That would be a potential. So but but that's the placeholder for what we know right now as the remaining required amount to complete Rosewood Middle and Rosewood Elementary.
Could I go back to line twenty? S R R F? That's a sewer revolving fund?
State revolving fund.
And what are we using those dollars for?
Rehab of the Janowa sewer system.
Thank you.
A complete rehab, pipes, inlets, manholes.
And that's a low interest loan.
It's a low interest loan.
From the state.
Okay, well, I didn't, I didn't know we had that project. Okay.
You didn't remember that?
We've been renovating that sewer program for for twenty years.
We've, we've, we've had that. Going on thirteen years, I know.
I know. All right, good enough, thank you.
Yeah, that's a, that's a twenty-year loan commitment, and I believe the rate they've committed to is two point zero four.
That is hard to borrow money at that.
It it is on the market, you're right. So felt like that was one that we should take advantage of. The line twenty-one are more of the market-based financings we might do. Again, probably going to be bank financings. As I said, we're not anticipating needing to do the Rosewood borrowing until this time next year, give or take, so we have time. And then we don't have another potential borrowing. And again, this is not, nobody's signing off on the borrowings, right? Those are all going to come before you at the right time. Twenty twenty-eight, that two point three million, that is, I think, primarily driven by Maxwell resurfacing paving type project. And then in twenty twenty-nine, there's eleven point seven million. That is made up of additional exhibit and meeting space at Maxwell plus EMS stations thirteen and fourteen. If they all happen together, right? And they could potentially be borrowed together. But chances are, as we do this again next year, and the following, these things are going to move around a little bit presumably. But that's the plan. We have now, through all of these funding sources, we've got a hundred and nine million dollars of projects identified, and we've got a hundred and nine million dollars of funding identified. And every year is matched, right? Fifty-two to fifty-two, you compare line eleven and twenty-four, and every year should be matched.
So quick question again. Twenty-two, the two point, the two million dollars for capital for the schools. Is that the that the recurring capital man is given to the schools? The two million each year?
Yes.
So is this an appropriate place to show that? Because the schools use that money to complete small projects that they choose, not what the commission chooses, right? So this chart here, you're showing funds that the commission has available to cover debt service or projects that the commission so chooses to do, correct?
Well.
Or am I reading that wrong?
Yes, but but I guess why we're including it, we've got it up on line four as a expense. And then we've got an offsetting revenue source down below. So they're basically a wash.
Got you.
It could, both of those lines could be removed, and the impact we're about to discuss wouldn't change. They're dollar for dollar. But I guess technically what you're saying is they they pick what they spend that two million on, and you all make it available every year.
And I understand your questions, and I'm just trying to get clarity here. The funds for sales tax.
Forty forty-two.
Right. Those are collected by the state along with our county sales tax. All of that comes to the county budget. All of that is pours into our budget. So we have to allocate it back out. Those dollars specifically state they are for school capital projects. A portion of that, two million dollars, is what we have set aside for the schools to pick those projects that they need repairs on the buildings. And and I'm going to kind of get ahead of myself here. You're probably correct that those dollars could in fact be increased as an example. But if you increase that two million dollars to say. But if you increase that $2 million to say $3 million, that is going to reduce those funds that we have in that fund.
Right, yeah, correct. And I and I understand that because the the point I guess I am on on that, and I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, is as as a county, we are choosing to use Article 4042 sales tax to fund debt service for school construction.
Correct, because it's got to be used.
But that's mainly that the school district also receives to maintain chillers, boilers, those kind of things. So and that's a finite pot of money. So as the county of Wayne chooses to fund debt service for school construction using these articles, which is appropriate based on the statute, it reduces the amount of money that can go to the school district to maintain the current facilities that they have. So my only challenge would be in the future, if the commission board would look at a potential different way to fund school construction or another way, and that's a potential conversation for another time. You know, that's why I just ask you, when you look at taxpayer dollars in Wayne County, how how much of my money as a Wayne County taxpayer that I pay when I purchase items in Wayne County, when I pay my property tax and I pay my vehicle tax, and I know you can't answer this today, is actually going to fund Rosewood middle school construction? How much of state funds, lottery funds, uh 4042 sales tax that the state collects is going? And I know you can't answer that.
Yeah, but we certainly can work towards getting that.
My perception would be, based on what I know, is that we utilize, and it is it is appropriate by the statute, we utilize state funding through Article 4042 and lottery funds to fund these projects. But also from my background, as we all know from the school, I know as we utilize those funds for these things, and they're needed projects. It reduces the amount of funds that the school district receives just to maintain boilers, chillers, roofs, 1.2 million dollar roof, 1.4 million dollar roof. COVID helped many government entities tremendously, unfortunately for the pandemic. You know, but there was quite a bit of capital improvement done in the school district that um did not have to come back to the commission board to pick up. You know, at least 30-plus million dollars worth of work that was done has been deferred over the years. And that whole argument can keep going back and forth, but that's, I guess, as I'm thinking about how we're funding school construction.
Here's the fallback. The fallback is the county is responsible to maintain those. And if the funds were not available, the county would have to fund that in some some appropriate way. So it's it's kind of a fallback to it. We are using those dollars for that purpose. Uh but if all of a sudden we had six uh roofs that had to be replaced and the funds would far exceeded the $2 million, the county would have to step forward and actually come up with those dollars.
And that's enough, that's a problem every county and every school system in the state of North Carolina faces. That's a shortfall in funding or or a way for a county to raise revenue for school construction beyond just property taxes, which is a limited portion of the population.
Correct.
Good discussion.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and certainly as things have all come out of this meeting, if there's something else we want to look at, we're we're able to do that as needed. Page 19 just gives you, and I I look at the upper right, we're just isolating here for the current CIP, for the current scenario we're running, what is the debt that's running through the model? We're so we're isolating that, and we've broken it out between county and schools by fiscal year. This should tie back to the page we just looked at, right? The the brown line was at SRF, right? That's that 2.8 million. And then the green line on the prior page are all those other projects that might require debt funding. So over this five-year period, um under the total line, there's about $24.3 million of new debt that would be running through the model. Some of it for schools, some of it for for county. Um our basic assumptions are in keeping with what we've done in the prior versions of the debt assumptions, what the LGC would expect to see um for the the non-SRF debt, the installments that we might do with banks, a 20-year term at a 5% interest rate, which is above the current market. But we wanted to have a little bit of conservatism there. And then again, the SRF loan in the bottom right is uh the 2% commitment. Interestingly, when you look at that top-left graph, right, that's your existing debt service schedule every year. It's about $16 million and declining. Um and then we're layering in the new debt, and even with that new debt, we're not getting above the current year payment, right? So as your debt is tailing off, and yes, we're adding in some new debt, we're not getting back up to that $16 million level. So it's, this new debt is fitting within the declines of the existing debt, which is, you know, that's the beauty of having that downward sloping debt profile. So um if we were to do all of this, if this is exactly how it would plan at pan out, the debt that we might issue, we've layered that in to our three debt ratios, and they all work. The ratios or the policies that you have can accommodate the amount of debt we're talking about here. There's nothing that we would expect to breach a policy or anything like that. So it it certainly fits within your capacity, right? That's the only takeaway. Doesn't mean it's a good project or a bad project or or what have you, but it does fit within your policies. And then most importantly, I think, is how do we pay for it, right? And what's important to remember here on page 21 is we're we're measuring not only the new debt, but any Pago that's running through this CIP, right? The the county model includes projects that are cash-funded and debt-funded. And so what we've done here, and there's detail in the back if you want to look at this in more specific columns, but column B is in boy becomes the payments you have to make in the county model. And what does that encompass? It encompasses the debt you've already issued, the potential new debt that we've talked about, and all the Pago for the county CIP. C is the, column C is the revenue we already identified as coming into the model. We spent time on that on an earlier slide. What you see in column D is that there's shortfalls expected under the current CIP, beginning in fiscal '26, right? You've got 16.3 million that might be spent to fully fund the CIP. We've got 10 and a half million of reoccurring revenue identified. Column D, we're about 5.7 million short. Now remember, you've got that $12 million that has been set aside. That is available to you to spend, and and that's what we've assumed.
But that's combined debt that reoccurred between the county and the school system.
Not schools, just county. It's the existing county debt that's already on the books, the new debt and the Pago. There's some pretty healthy Pago dollars in the CIP. And so when you look at column E, that is the depiction of spending that capital reserve down over a couple of years. Right now, it's spending down to zero. This is not very different at all from what we presented a year ago. And essentially, what we're measuring in column F, G, and H are three different ways to show you the affordability of funding the county, not the school, the county CIP as it's been presented. Essentially, column F is saying, how many dollars and in what years do we need to make all of this balance? Payments going out versus revenues coming in. How many more dollars do we need to supplement to make these balance? And column F is telling you that number on an annual basis. Keep in mind, it doesn't start till 2028. That reserve you've accumulated can buy you some time on um funding the CIP '26 and '27, but new revenues, the way this has been modeled, are going to be needed beginning in 2028 for seven or eight years. Another way to to show you the impact is column G, which is how many pennies on the tax rate does that equal to, right? One way to raise the revenue to do this would be to consider a tax adjustment. I'm not suggesting that would be your decision or it's 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 what we would recommend, but a good benchmark, right? How many pennies on the tax rate would it take to generate that kind of revenue? And between fiscal year '28 and '29, it would be the equivalent of about 3.3 pennies. But it doesn't start until '28. And then lastly, on H, we're just simply saying, how many pennies in the current budget that you're working on would it be required to set aside? Not unlike something we've done before where we have raised a tax, put it in place, or raised a new revenue and put it in place to be used later. That's how we got that 12 million of reserve. Column H is just giving you perspective that you could do it, fully fund it at, with the equivalent of 1.8 pennies beginning in '26. So it's three ways to 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 fund the same uh gap, if you will.
And that's in reference to the new revow figures, is that correct?
It is taking into account the new revow where a penny is now.
1,318.
Pardon?
A million 318.
Million three. Taking that into consideration. That'll begin in fiscal '26. So the, but again, this this page 21 does not include schools. You'll see it says county. So it is measuring the debt you've already got on the books for county, the the Pago for the county and the CIP that's not covered from grants and outside sources, and the debt that you might issue in the future. All of those together is what's rolled into column B. Those become the payments. And then column C are all those revenue sources we talked about earlier. And and we've got a, under this scenario, we've got to find additional dollars to fund this beginning in fiscal '28. Okay? And again, not very different from where we were about a year ago. Very similar uh result.
For clarity?
Yes.
To actually fund that, you're saying that we could hold off until '28, increase the tax rate by 1.46, the following year increase the tax rate by 1.88, or in this fiscal year, we could uh increase tax rate by 1.8 cents?
And continue that.
And that would.
Either way, it would it would fund this program as modeled, the entire county CIP.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay? This is the summary page that that I think you care about for the county. That's page 21. 22 just shows you the one scenario we talked about, column J or those dollars. You can just see how all the math works. It's detail for one of the scenarios we looked at on the prior page. Page 23 is the uh the two-step tax adjustment in '28 and '29. And 24 is the one-time adjustment in '26. So those three pages are just showing you how we got to the summary level that we talked about on page 21. Lastly, lastly, the school model. So there is some school debt, right, running through the CIP. Page 25 is the school model only. B, column B is the debt that's already on the books. Those are the payments we know we have to make on debt that's already been issued for schools. Column C is the new debt service for potential school borrowing that we talked about earlier, right? Wouldn't, probably wouldn't happen until next spring for Rosewood Elementary or Middle, if you do it, if you if you choose to approve that debt if it's needed. D is the $2 million a year that's got to be spent on Pago, whereas it's been agreed to be spent on Pago. So column E is the sum of that, existing debt, new debt, Pago. Those are the payments being made under column E. And then the same two funding sources that we talked about for the school model, sales tax and lottery. Nothing's changed there. And what you'll see in J is even with that additional potential debt, we still have surpluses every year. So there are more dollars currently being dedicated to the school capital model than are needed um for the current, the existing debt and the potential of issuing the new debt to fully fund the Rosewood projects. And and remember, that that model has 5.7 million that's been accumulated. The upper right, we're not touching that, right? So it's it's different from the county model in that the dollars running through this model will accommodate the the CIP for schools as it exists right now. And there are remaining dollars that are available for additional school capital in the future.
On column C, you've indicated the payments for that proposed debt. What is the amount of that proposed debt?
7.4 million.
7.4 million.
That is the current estimate for what we need to complete Rosewood Middle and Elementary beyond the dollars.
So that's the new classrooms at Rosewood Elementary. And the difference from state funding that we would have to fund on Rosewood Middle.
And we're assuming we can take that unspent bond money from the prior, that's baked into that. So the 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 gap on those two schools together is 7.4. That's the payment that's running through that column you just asked about.
Okay.
So in terms of funding, either of these, there's not a an FY26 decision that has to be made to fund it, but obviously you all are assessing your operating budget, the CIP, and and lots of other things. And um should you want to look at alternative scenarios, you know.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Our school debt, our our Rosewood uh Elementary and Rosewood Middle.
That was like 7.9 and 3, but or somewhere there, somewhere thereabouts, 11 million dollars. Is that any right?
It it may have been at one point, but then I think the unspent bond money from the early borrowing.
Okay, so we're taking that off, okay. So it is 12 million dollars, but we're just taking 4 million off.
I like it. You're tying it out, yes.
Everything you say, we're, you're keeping notice, so.
I'm I'm.
Just appreciate that, Dan.
That worked. We had to be getting some money from somewhere. I just didn't know where we were.
I got it. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you for fielding our questions.
I do have a question for the county manager. In your proposed budget, how did you budget for that deficit in regards to payments? Are you going to wait till next? Okay, we'll wait till the 20th. I just interested to see how, what your recommendation is.
Anxious.
The what?
You're really too anxious. Remember, CIP is a moving plan. It's not a set-in-stone plan.
It is.
So uh you have to take that with.
That consideration.
So. If you got any other questions for Ted, if not, we'll move to public comments.
We do have um Alfonso Edwards.
I'm sorry we had to bore you all with all of this financial information before you got up to speak.
It was her education.
Thank you.
I'd like to say good morning to the commissioners and all.
Good morning.
My name is Alfonso Edwards, and this is my wife, Claudia Edwards. We live at 105 Woods Mill Road, Goldsboro, North Carolina, in the Creek subdivision. We moved out there in August of 19. If the Lord will, this coming August, it'll be 35 years. We have paid more than $70,000 in gold or in Wayne County tax. I'm here today to recommend a tax rate for Wayne County that will be just and fair to all. I'm not here to contest the profit increase, but I'd like to share this with you anyway. My proffered value was in '23 and '24 valued at $168,370. It had increased to $248,870, an increase of $8,1,500 of 48%. On these information provided at the bottom is Wayne County history for '23 and '24. at the bottom is Wayne County history for twenty-three and twenty-four. Your rates determine how much you pay each year in taxes. Twenty-three, the tax rate was point seven four two, and my tax was twelve hundred and fifty dollars. In twenty-four, the tax rate increased to point seven six seven, and my tax was twelve ninety-two. Increase of eighty-eight dollars, I'm, I'm sorry, forty-two dollars. Uh, I'm proposing for twenty-five, that my tax rate for Wayne County, the commission, used point five five five, and my tax would be thirteen hundred and eighty dollars, an increase of eighty-eight dollars. That is fair and just. Keep in mind, too, that we at Tax Bell, our home in, home insurance is going to go up because our property has gone up. Also, the economy is very stressful now. But please consider that, the recommendation for Wayne County tax. Are there any questions? Comments?
I would just like to say thank you for this information. It's very enlightening, and the fact that you remembered everything that's on the sheets of paper is quite amazing, because I wouldn't have. But this is very, something that, that we can definitely take into consideration, I mean, something to think about. We haven't looked at the numbers like this, so I thank you for it.
I thank you for your comment there. You know, the Lord is good when you lose something else, you get stronger in something else.
Yes, sir.
My sight is almost gone.
Yes, sir.
So he blessed us real in other ways.
Yes, sir.
It's a thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
And I'd also like to say thank you for this information, because this is the first time that it's been presented to me in, in this fashion. I mean, it, it makes, it makes sense, and I just wanted to thank you for, for this information, because this, this is very useful.
I'd like to say something, um, sir, so in regard to you paying county and city taxes. So have you addressed the city as well?
Yes, sir, I went to them on the last month. I provide them the same copy that you see there. And by the way, I am paying almost three thousand dollars a year in taxes. County thirteen eighty will be this year, and twenty-six for the city.
Sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards, for taking your time to come and speak to us, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
God bless them.
You too.
Thank you.
Any other public speakers?
Right, and moving along to the county manager's report, I will say that we had a, a great weekend out at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base with Wings Over Wayne. It was very successful. Appreciate the staff, uh, here from the county, putting in the efforts to have our hospitality tent and, uh, put forth, uh, the efforts into working that, and appreciate, uh, the North Carolina Global Transpark EDR having a tent beside us, as well as the Wayne County Development Alliance a tent beside them. We entertained a lot of guests, and, uh, it was very fun, and probably the best one I've been to. The weather was definitely the nicest that I've been to in a long time, so, uh, that's all for my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, um, um, I'm happy all, all of the young people in our community that have applied for the Summer Youth Employment Program. We'll be doing the interviews really soon. Also, just wanna thank everybody for, um, for the development that's gonna be happening in Dudley, it's been a long time coming. And, um, I think Dudley's a great place, we just need to, uh, invest a little bit more in Dudley. Thank you.
Mr. Drucker?
No comment.
Ms. Rayco?
Yes, ma'am, I said earlier at the beginning of the meeting that I had a couple of things that I wanted to discuss. I met with Mr. Neal during the break, he answered one of my questions, so that one's out of the way. He's gonna get the answers to the other que- questions, and then we can discuss it at a later time. Thanks, thank you, Andrew.
Ms. Gray?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, want to, um, congratulate one of our own, uh, Jason Baker, our, uh, I reckon he's Director of Inspections, uh, would be his correct title, but, uh, this weekend, he was, uh, he finished third, uh, in the professional division of, um, hot cooking in, at the Barbecue Fest in, uh, uh, Barbecue on the Noose in, uh, Kenton. So, uh, that was a, a great achievement on his part. Also, Raffle Grand, uh, which is, owns, um, Buck's Fire Extinguishers along with his wife, and, uh, great sauces and rubs. He, he competed as well in the backyard, and he finished third as well. So we had two, two people from Wayne County, uh, um, compete and finish, uh, place in a historic, uh, event, uh, in Lenora County. They, uh, they were going for a Guinness Book of World Records. I think the record for barbecue sandwiches sold in an eight-hour timeframe was somewhere around twenty-five hundred. They sold four thou- four hun- four thousand seven hundred seventy-five, uh, sandwiches, and could have sold more, but they ran out of buns, what I understand. And, uh, they would let them, they had some that were frozen, but I understand this is, they wouldn't let them do, uh, wouldn't let them sell those. Uh, and they said that, uh, the ones that I talked to said that they could probably make three sandwiches out of, out of barbecue that was on each sandwich, so, um, so, uh, congratulations to Lenora County, Kenton, and Jason and Raff. Uh, Wings Over Wayne, as Chip's already alluded to, great event, uh, and I'm probably gonna miss some people, but I'm on, uh, Joe and Trent, Dean and Kendall, Chip and Ginger. Appreciate them, uh, and, uh, Georgie, appreciate those, uh, for, um, their commitment to our employees and, uh, and, and entertaining the, the, the guests from the families and all. Also, Dave and his staff for making sure everybody was, uh, well taken care of, uh, in their time of need, and I think he was, they had several, uh, they had to attend to on Saturday, like, maybe it's not as many on Sunday because of the weather changed a little bit. Uh, don't forget the, uh, uh, spring, uh, luncheon is tomorrow at the Maxwell Center, um, I think eleventh. It's eleven to two. So we got to get busy and start cooking. The, um, also, uh, um, I attended the funeral of, um, Canine Lark, uh, German Shepherd that, uh, died in line of duty here in Wayne, at, uh, Wayne County in Goldsboro. He's actually, uh, his partner is my niece's fiance. So, uh, I attended that at Wayne Community College. Also had the honor of attending the, um, uh, a great friend of mine, uh, for thirty-five plus years, Mr. Troy Pay. Uh, he passed away, uh, Friday was a week ago, and, uh, as Wayne Week, uh, stated, Wayne County lost a, a giant. All his, uh, contributions to, uh, protecting Seymour Johnson, uh, his, uh, work with the Boys and Girls Club. I mean, it just goes on and on and on, and the stuff that was in the paper, and his obituary is just minimal.
ECU med school responsible.
Absolutely, yes, so he's, uh, people just don't realize the contributions he's made to Wayne County and Eastern North Carolina. Uh, so keep Miss Joyce T and lending prayers, they, um, uh, they're going through a time that a lot obviously have gone through in the past, so. A little bit on DOT, uh, roads, uh, Oak Forest Road extensions, um, through Fallon Boulevard from, uh, seventy-three, that's coming to, uh, getting close to being, uh, finished. Along the rural avenue extension is attached to that improvement project. Thirteen North expansions for utility improvements and Waymore Drive are going on simultaneously, and the bad thing is, is when they get those done, the road project's gonna be, would probably be within a month apart of running at the same time, so. Your northbound inward, or inbound route from the north part of the county is gonna be impacted at the same time, two out of the three. Let's see, I think that is, I think that's it, so, thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just, uh, wanna say thank you to Chief Justice Paul Newby. I had the opportunity to be in the Clerk of Court's office last week when he came. Um, and thank you to the Clerk of Court and her staff, and how hard it's, very apparent they've been working on the E Courts and getting that rolled out, and Judge Stackhouse was there and others, and, uh, Chief Justice Newby was, uh, very kind and, uh, very gracious and, uh, positive. And thank everyone there, including us as county commissioners, for providing their location and everything that the county does. So that was great to see that, uh, staff really gun, I know they work really, really hard, uh, some on the weekend to make sure that was, um, rolled out. So thank you to him and our clerk's office and all those individuals working there. Also, uh, Ms. Ann and Ms. Angie and Chip and Andrew, and I'm sure Ginger and the others, thank you for everything you've done to help Davenport, because I know he comes and gives that presentation, but I know those numbers and everything start with you and sharing with them. So I know there's a lot of work that goes into that, so I appreciate everything you're doing for that. I'll be attending the Eastern Carolina Council, uh, meeting this week in New Bern, so looking forward to that. Maybe there'll be some positive information there when it comes to our aging population and monies from there. Uh, and, and thank you again to all the staff and everything you're doing week after week. And all of those, uh, proclamations that we did for mental health, nursing, our wonderful clerks. Over here, it goes unsaid, everything that, um, people do every day just to make what we do work, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, yes, I, as being an advocate for mental health, um, I didn't speak on that while, during, after the presentation, but I would also agree with Dr. Harrell as how important mental health is, and that we all need to be aware of, you know, the issues that family members may have, those in the community, you know, and, and be kind to one another as much as possible, um, because, you know, little small things make a big difference, you know, um. I'll share this quick story, I was in the gym one year, and a guy I've been knowing for years, talked to him, him and his wife, his kids, all of them. And, uh, we exchanged phone numbers over the years, and ended up, you know, shoot, shoot texts to each other, just check on each other and everything. And one day in the gym, he, uh, he's having a rough day, I didn't know it, I just spoke to him, we started talking. And, uh, I ended up not working out, I talked to him the whole time, you know, he talked to me. And his wife ended up texting me later on and calling my aunt, uh, to tell me that he told her that he was gonna kill himself. But talking to me actually helped him. You know, and I didn't at that time, didn't know what I was doing, you know what I'm saying? But sometimes just making those small sacrifices for someone else, because I could have been like, oh, well, I'm gonna go work out, you know what I mean? But I would say to everyone, you know, always, you know, be aware of, try to be aware of what's going on with somebody, because we never know. You know what I mean, we just never know. We've all faced some type of mental illness, you know, sometimes it's, it's not as bad as others, but depression, anxiety, stress, there's, they're all mental illness. And so just please be aware of that moving forward. Secondly, um, I thank Davenport for the CIP planning update, um, you know, I've always been curious of a lot of finances, and, you know, from one report, I hear one thing, from, from the next, I hear something different. But, uh, I just think that we, we need to focus on, you know, our losses, you know, try to do what we can for our schools. Two million dollars in twenty-seventeen is not the same two million dollars in twenty-twenty-five, you know, um. And to look at our losses and, and, and be accurate about it, you know, I've heard different things about the jet port, one minute we're above, we're making money, the next minute we're losing. So it's kinda confusing, you know, to get two different financial reports from two different outside financial sources. So, but, uh, at the end of the day, thank you.
One more thing, I want to apologize to the, uh, board for not being in attendance of the, the agenda briefing. I showed up this morning with bright colors and got the stink eye from our clerk, because I forgot to wear, uh, a red, uh, uh, blue and red, so. That's the reason I was not in attendance, I'm just messing with Karen, but she did give me the stink eye when I walked in, I said. That's, that's why Grandma used to call me a little bit, so. Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Is that all?
Let's keep going.
Everybody's already said everything I would say.
Go back in the closed session.
Make them actually go back in closed session for.
The same reasons as before.
The same reasons as before.
Can you raise your hands on this one?
We are now in open session. We will convene downstairs to have our photos taken and we will come recess downstairs.